So Mayor, I know you're all exhausted and this is going to be a very dense. I saved the most dense presentation for the end of the day. But Ronnie, this is for you. This was your request back in the day. So don't, this is really your fault.
So this is Ronnie's fault?
It's Ronnie's fault.
It's not for me.
But to give you some background on kind of how this first came up, because it's, we've been working on it for several years at this point. When I first became city manager, I had police and fire personnel that came to me and they had individuals and they had originally said, you know, our, our health insurance when we retire is just not a real health insurance plan. And I kind of, okay, I, you know, I hear a lot of complaints. I didn't think anything about it. And then Ronnie came to the first retreat and she announced it at the retreat about how there's a problem.
Issue.
An issue, an opportunity, as Shontae would say. And we started looking into it. At first I thought, okay, this isn't, you know, I'm looking at this and I think we're really comparable to other cities. And so we started looking at it and ultimately after we've done this full dive, I, you know, want to say that Ronnie was right. We do have an issue with our retiree health insurance. Specifically, right now, we have a total of all the people that have retired from the city of Louisville that are not eligible yet for Medicare. We have 20 total on our plan. That's only 20 people who have selected to be on our health insurance plan. And really those people that have chosen to be on the plan are more than likely the most sick and most needing to be on our plan. That's why they're willing to pay the high premiums on it. So we looked at what other cities are paying on average and it's basically around $700, a little bit less than $700 a month that they're paying premium. And we're really pushing up. We've been holding our steady, but you'll see that we're actually needing to push our premiums up to about $1,700 a month. So it's a big difference.
For an individual.
For an individual, just an individual. So how did we get here is really because of Gatsby best practices and we'll go through that. So really we're weighing out the financials versus the people. And so really this is a philosophical conversation that you guys have to have today, but of course I would never bring you a present, I would never give you a proposal unless I felt that there was a solution, a financially sound solution to getting there. And so that's what we're doing is providing you a solution to the problem at hand that will cost money, but at least we will be positioned to, we will be positioned to not only be valuing our employees in retirement, but also being financially staple with regard to it. But I do want to point out that, put it into perspective, we have maintenance workers that, you know, that maybe make $18 an hour. And when they, and they are physically active every single day and their bodies are worn out because of their physical activities. And maybe they need to retire earlier than 65. And so at that point, what we're looking at is them trying to come up with a premium about a $1,700, that's today, that we would have to do. So that's the, that's the conundrum at hand and we'll have the specifics going through that. But I want to also point out, because it's important for you to know this, the solution to this, we are going to be increasing our long-term liabilities, but it's kind of like buying, buying points on your mortgage. We can put money towards solving that financial solution on the front end to help us, but that's money that we have some, that's about eight point something mil, 8.7 million that we would have to put to this, that we have available, we can use. 6.3 of that though, is money that we could use for things other than health purposes. So either general fund dollars or it could be for a risk fund dollars. Those are dollars that you could use for one-time costs to buy a fire truck, to buy, to pay for a road construction, those types of things. So this is real dollars and you guys are going to have to make that decision. I just don't want you to think, we, we do have this opportunity where we have this money available because we've had lower claims in the, in the past couple of years. We've had good years where we have this available. It won't always be there and it will also come with an ongoing cost. So all that to say, this is a very difficult decision. It is going to be very dense, but this is probably one of the more exciting and bold decisions you would have to make, but it's also a hard decision you would have to make or discuss. So with that.
You are my density?
No, okay. All right. Let's try and, all right. So retiree health insurance. Thank you for the, for the intro Claire. So I'm really excited to be giving this presentation in partnership with Dave Herb. We, while this is not a glamorous topic, we're excited about all the teamwork internally on us working through solutions. And then we've contracted with Ms. Albritton, who is our actuary. So she's available for any questions if we want to deep dive on any of her analysis or work that was done during the presentation. So as Claire stated, we do, we have identified what we think are some viable solutions, but they do come at a, at a cost as it relates to retiree health insurance. Maybe I'm doing it wrong. Let's see here. Is it on? Yes. Maybe the battery died? I don't know.
Heartbeat broken.
There we go.
It was, it was Stacy. Can you, can you advance? Okay. Thank you very much. All right. So let's start with, I shouldn't have said anything about Melissa earlier. Now she's advancing my slides. So we'll start, Claire alluded to this, but we want to start with the background just to set the stage. So this is, this is a topic we've been talking about for a while. I know since I've been here, we had a discussion about this in the summer of 2023. We'd done some analysis and at that time, no decisions were made. What we said is we'd come back and get a more thorough understanding of what our comparison cities are doing. Then we came back and discussed in workshop with council back in July of 2024, shared data from the 17 cities. And out of that, we identified that we used to apples and apples, the whole thing. We said, what does it look like for retire, a city of Louisville retiree with 20 years of experience in the organization? So you take the, the premium minus our subsidy that we give for that 20 years, which, which in our case is $500. That net, at the time, that netted out is $974 a month for an employee only on the health plan with 20 years of experience with the city. So back last summer, we identified that was where we're at and across our comparison cities, that average was at $694. So we, we definitely are higher than some of our comparison cities. And we talked about at that time, that our manner of calculating the rate differs from many of those other cities. And so we'll talk about that today. About half the cities do it in a different way. So we agreed at that time, we're going to come back and model some options that align with what we see in some of those other cities and see how much pain that would create for us on the fiscal side of things. Next slide. Thank you. Question. What do you call that thing in the picture?
Teeter totter.
Thank you. All right. I was wondering if we're going to get any teeter totters. Okay. It's a seesaw or a teeter totter. They're both acceptable. So this is a visualization of what Claire just talked about. Just wanted to show it of really the tension here is that as we try and take care of our employees and go in a positive direction on costs for the employees, the flip side of that is, is the fiscal responsibility element. Thank you very much. And so really our tension here is how do we simultaneously value our people while being fiscally responsible? And so, yes, yes, sir.
Now OPEB, that acronym is up to twice.
We're about to go, I'm sorry, we're getting ahead of ourselves, but I got a smart finance director that's about to walk you through it here in just a second.
If that's coming later.
Yes, sir. So, so just tying into that last slide, yeah, I think our question, our policy consideration today is how do we build a policy towards long-termured employees that reflects the Louisville way? Claire just gave a great example, but yeah, just to further that, we have like for, for city employees, there's an assumption, many of our jobs are physically oriented and so therefore folks don't end up doing those, they're not expected to do those jobs forever. Our state retirement system is built on the concept that many of our folks who are out there, our ULM team, our police team, et cetera, many others doing physical work, that they are more likely to retire in their late 50s or early 60s, not at age 65. And so what we're required to do as an employer by state law is we have to offer retiree health coverage. We don't have to pay for any of it. So our current model is that we don't, we're, we build it on the assumptions that the retirees need to pay the full freight for their cost for the plan and we don't pay any. And so that, that creates a situation Claire described where it's just unaffordable for folks. And I'll walk through some, some details on, on our current data. But I think just to, to put it another way, our challenge here is how do we most effectively value our employees who have served our community for the long-term and build this, and build it in a sustainable manner? And we think we have a solution that does that here. And now I'm going to pass it over to Dave and he's going to walk through some of those, some of that terminology and make sure you guys are comfortable there.
Okay. So be with me for five minutes. We're going to go through a little OPEB 101. What I hope to do over the next four slides, or yeah, four slides, is just provide a foundation for you all then when Ted comes back and starts speaking in terms that you have an understanding and where we're going with this. So I'm going to have fundamentals, philosophy, and then funding plan, and then we'll move into the numbers and the work that Ms. Albritton had done for us. So what is OPEB? OPEB are benefits received after retirement that are not pension related. So the city of Louisville provides life and health post-retirement benefits. So that's what we're talking about when we're talking about OPEB. The benefits does create a liability and we are to fund that either through a pay-as-you-go or pre-funded. Back in, I think, 2017, the city established an irrevocable trust to fund these. So there's certain benefits that you get from establishing a trust versus doing pay-as-you-go. And that's where we get to offset the total OPEB liability, which is the present value of the total benefits that we have to offer. We can offset, offset that by the fund assets that we have in, in possession. The plan assets, like any other irrevocable trust, can only be used for specific purposes and that's for the payment of or reimbursement for benefits for the plan. Now, each year we have an actuarial valuation that's done that assesses the current health of the plan. It is performed annually. We have currently Lewis and Ellis, Ms. Albritton's firm, that performs that. And what they will do is they will determine the liability size and the funding status based on a certain level of benefits. So what you're going to see with the changes in the liabilities, with the different options are going to be different benefit levels that we're offering for the retirees. Currently, the way Gatsby works in accounting is depending on if we have a net asset, which means more assets than the liability or net liability, which means we are underfunded, under 100%. We show that. It's reflected on our financials. So if you were to go to exhibits one and two of our annual financial report, you're going to see a line that says net OPEB asset, because we are currently over 100% funded, which is a good thing. And then lastly, regarding the fundamentals for OPEB, we have something called the actuarially determined contribution. This is the amount that is calculated annually that is needed to adequately fund the plan into the future. So we use a 30-year rolling period and we determine what those liabilities are over those 30-year period. We present value them back. We determine how much assets we have at that time and then it determines what that contribution's going to be. Claire's right. So before we were planning on making any kind of changes to the way we're administering the plan now is because we are 100% funded. We didn't want to just go off and, and take on maybe more than we can handle. So we reached outside of our organization to get some direction on how best we, or what are the best practices for managing an OPEB fund. So we started with the American Academy of Actuaries and they prepare something called the issue brief. They had an article about the soundness of a pension or benefit plan. And basically what they were saying is you've heard percent funding might be a way of measuring the health of a pension plan. Well, what they're saying is there's no single level of funding that defines that line between what's healthy and what's unhealthy. What they are saying is that it is better to evaluate the plan on a strategy that you have for funding to the 100% level. That's consistent with GFO best practices. They have two best practices related to OPEB governance and administration and sustainable practices. And both of us say that a commitment to fund the obligation at 100% and to get to that 100% level are best practices. And oddly enough, our city practices to fund that ADC at 100% and we've done that every year. Now, the interesting thing about OPEB funding is once you're over 100% funded, there's really no methodology that says you need to continue to fund. You could choose to pause for that year because you've got more assets in there than you need. But what I've asked Bonnie to, Ms. Albritton to do is we're going to assume that we're going to make that annual service costs, that minimum ADC, so that we are going to contribute to the fund each year, the additional value of that liability that's recruited in that year, if that makes sense. So we will always, even if we're over 100%, continue to attribute into the fund. It does a couple of things. One, it's kind of like dollar cost averaging, where you're putting money into an investment and you're taking advantage of the returns for that. And then the second one was for budgeting purposes. If I kept going to budget, one year we're not going to budget anything and the next year we're going to budget $100,000, it's going to drive a nudge. So just for budgeting purposes, we're doing that. So what's our proposed funding plan? So with any increase in long-term liability, well, there will be a resulting increase in the long-term liability from a benefit increase is what we're going to recommend now. We wanted to bring to you a plan to minimize those impacts. And how are we going to do that? Well, we've got a great starting point because we are over 100% funded. So we already have funds on hand that we can build upon to address any additional liability from a change in the benefits. As Claire had mentioned before, we had better-than-expected claims experience for both our health and risk management programs that have resulted in some growth in our reserves, which are now available for a one-time transfer to help reduce that OPEB liability. And you'll see that in a later slide from Ted. This is an anomaly. It's not something that we should expect every year, but this is an opportunity that we can make a one-time transfer to help offset that liability. In addition, we had previously a $2 million risk fund transfer into the general fund that we had said that we would make available for our one-time needs. And we think this is a perfect opportunity to utilize those funds. So we would propose that the $2 million transfer that went into the general fund then be used for a contribution to the OPEB fund. So that's the funding plan. This is the numbers that we're looking at. So we currently have an adjusted summary balance in the OPEB fund of about $5.1 million. Additional contributions in this fiscal year from the risk fund of 4.3 million, from the health fund, 2.5 million, and the $2 million transfer from the general fund brings the total of assets available for OPEB funding to just under $14 million. And you'll see references to the OPEB liability and then you'll be able to see the funding level that that represents. Now, even after those transfers, the reserves in the risk fund and the health fund remain strong in excess of $5 million in each of those for future needs. And with risk management, whether it's health or risk, you're going to have some volatility and it's good to have those reserves on hand to cover those costs. And then with the general fund, which is always a concern for us, combined with the fiscal year 2024 results, which resulted in an increase in the reserves, there's not going to be a, no negative impact to the general fund from this transfer. So we feel like we're taking some prudent steps to be fiscally responsible, to fund the plan with some of the proposals that we have here. But the key to all of this is this last point here, I've got it italicized and bold. A continuing commitment to funding 100% of the ADC, that actuarially determined contribution. That is something that is absolutely necessary, that we would recommend and continue that practice moving forward if we end up moving forward with the recommendations or proposals for the transfers and any kind of benefit changes. Any questions? That was a quick kind of 101 on OPEB.
Something real quick. I just wanted to reiterate a couple of things that Claire said when we started, when she was talking about the funding here, that the health fund can only be used for health expenses. So that 2.4 million that you're seeing there can only be used for health. So that's not really taking away from anything else. The risk fund is, it goes into our risk fund, but if we need it, if we feel like that balance is getting a little high, we can transfer that to any fund that we want to, basically. So we move it to the general fund and we could use it for one-time expenses. And then of course, the general fund, as Dave said, we budgeted, we actually did that from the risk fund. We thought it was getting high. We moved it to the general fund this year where we would more likely spend it on one-time things. So I just want you to understand that, you know, the risk and the general fund could be used for other things and that the health fund is restricted. It can only be used for health. And the other thing that she alluded to earlier too, is that these balances are high in that fund right now because our health claims over the past two years were a lot less than what we budgeted. That's not a normal experience. Even this year, I think Ted is already telling me that our claims are back up to where we anticipated them to be. So we have those balances in those funds right now, only because we had some really great claims experience. And so that's why we have that amount of money right now. In another year, you might not have it, you know, if, if we don't, we have it right now because of that experience. So next year, the claims can, experience could be totally different. So we want to make sure that we keep those balances high, because you don't really ever know what those claims are going to do. But even with this, the health fund balance would still be about a 35% operating reserve. And you know, we talk about the general fund being at 20 or 25 and we're normally closer to 35, 40. And on the health fund, no, I mean, on the risk fund, we're, we are over, we have about 2.6 million in expenses and this would leave a $5 million fund balance. So you're, you know, double what you need in a normal year. In the health fund, you'd still have a 35% operating reserve when you move those funds out. So I just wanted to make those clear as you're kind of walking through what you could have done with that funding, but how it's available now and it probably won't be available in this instance in another year.
So we, we've been funding above 100% of the ADC previously? So we've just been, I just want to, because you're saying we're going to continue to fund it. So how have we been funding it? I just want to make sure I understand that part.
So each year we will budget the ADC that goes into the OPEB from the health fund at 100% of what is determined by the actuary.
Oh, that's what we're currently doing. That's not what we're going to do in the future.
And we would continue to do that in the future, yes.
Because there's not new cost for that, that bottom, I see bullet, I see a bullet point that's bold and italicized. That's not new. We're currently doing that today. This doesn't mean there's an increase in taxes to support that particular line item. It's just, you're just drawing it to our attention. Is that right?
I'm sorry. Say that again.
That last bullet point, when I see something bold and italicized, it means important, which means in my mind it's new. So is this, this is not new is what I'm hearing. This is, we're currently doing this today. We're funding this at 100% today?
Yes. And that's why I said continuing commitment. So we're going to continue to fund at that 100%. That's our recommendation. I wouldn't want to do the transfer, set us up for success and then discontinue that practice.
How many years have we been doing that?
Since we've started that in, I think, 2017.
Okay. So it's the norm for us now. What I'm trying to get at is that are we going to see a bump in, in funding obligations from our citizens to make this happen? But it sounds like we've been covering this for almost a decade now already.
We've been covering it since the start. There is going to be an increase in the ADC and you'll see that in future slides, but that's all something that we're going to be able to manage within the existing budget.
The two years of, I've been in healthcare for a long time and two years, and I get ebbs and flows, right? It just takes one bad claim to, one bad experience to kind of knock that out of whack. But can you talk to me a little bit about any kind of healthy workforce initiatives we've had? Healthy workforce initiatives we may have had over the past two years?
Well, let me just make sure I'm clear on what you're asking me. You're just saying anything that we're doing in the space to make sure that we're keeping our employees healthy?
Yes.
So we have our employee health clinic. You all just approved the other night that we're increasing our behavioral health hours there. So we drive a lot of preventative health and acute care through that employee health clinic. We also have a wellness incentive program where we incentivize good metrics out of your wellness exam and other activities. And so there's a lot that we're doing quietly behind the scenes with our workforce to try and keep them as healthy as possible.
So we wouldn't be doing that if we didn't think there's benefit to, to our employees and to our bottom line. And what I'm going with this is that if we can attribute some of that cost, some of that savings to the, the balance that we have, I think it's fair to drive that back into our employees.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's my thought. That's the whole process going down, so.
Yes, sir. Well, just to add to one thing Gina just said, we, we were talking to our benefits consultant kind of that she said that we're at 35% in the health fund and they typically see a standard of where possible, at least 25%. So we're clearly exceeding that number after, after we, if we were to transfer these funds based on the recommendation that we're working towards here in a moment. So just to, I know this is dense, as Claire said, and it's a lot and it's the end of the day. So what Dave just walked through was kind of the, the fiscal framework. Now we're going to jump into, so I was telling you the story of the past. Now we've moved to what are we doing now? So we engaged with Lewis and Ellis, had them model a variety of different options for us. For us to start that project, we had to first move from 2024 into 2025. And so you take the current participants in the retiree plan and you model based off of their experience profile, what should rates be if they're paying their full freight for themselves next year? And just off the cuff, we suddenly jump, in this example, 16% for the employee only from 1474 to 1706. Now, we have not passed that on to any of our current retirees right now. We said, let's hold and sit on this. We left our rates at the current rates pending this conversation before we took any action. But this is, you know, the, you ask the why, this is, this is a real challenge for us. So where we find ourselves is we have a smaller and smaller group. As Claire said, we are down to 20 people on the plan right now. We were a little bit higher in past years, but it's gone down over time. That correlates back with the cost increase. So it's a little bit of a self-fulfill prophecy as we have the cost increase, we have fewer people on the plan. We did look at this last year. We had 15 people drop off the plan. 10 of those people were either reaching Medicare eligibility age or had some alternate plan through Medicaid availability. And then the other five generally tied back to the cost issue. So we lost about five people tied to cost issue that were on the plan last year. Of this, these are new participants in each year. Of this last year, we had 15 potential retirees that could have chosen to jump onto the plan and we only had one of the 15 retirees jump onto the plan. So the data is showing us that the affordability issue is absolutely a real thing. And then the, the challenge is because we, we build the rates off of the retiree experience. Again, you're taking 20 people and saying, what was their experience for a year? So if they had a great year, you know, in theory, the rates could go down. But if they had, if you had one person who had a really bad year, suddenly with your, your population of only 20, it goes way up. And so it puts us in a real challenge to build sustainable rates and we're not in a sustainable cycle on how this is built currently. So as we dug deeper into this, we said, this, this isn't really working. We modeled the blended rate approach. The blended rate approach is really just instead of taking those 20 retirees, it's saying, take those 20 retirees plus approximately 800 employees and what's the experience of that whole group? That's how we're modeling our premium. And if we take that mixed approach, then that's a more, that's a larger data set. So you have more stability in your rate setting going forward. So that's what you're going to see, what we believe to be the best solution and is going to show on this not dense at all chart with lots of numbers all over it. So let me help you kind of navigate this chart in a way at least I find helpful. So you heard me say earlier that last summer, so this first column is as, as of current, our current status. As of last summer, a 20-year retiree was paying $974 a month. That's 974 is taking the base rate of 1474 minus the $500 direct subsidy, netting a 974. So these yellows are what the net impact is to the retiree on a monthly premium cost. We start off with a base rate. We apply, in this case, a subsidy. You'll see in some examples, we actually have built in some surcharge and some future modeling and then that nets out a premium for then. So the average at that time was 974. You all still recall from the earlier slide that we identified the market average at that time was 694. So we built two of our options here. We try and achieve market average and see what that looks like in the totality of the circumstances. So Lewis and Ellis helped us model this. Yes, ma'am.
That is a low cost because, I mean.
Almost. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Just the retired employee, but if they have a spouse.
Absolutely. Our focus in this presentation is just the retiree, but you're absolutely right. If it's the spouse, it's approximately double that depending on the scenario. Yes, ma'am.
That number, we were trying to drive to that, to the average of what the other cities are doing. So we really, we, that's where we got to that was they're, they're always basing on employee versus employee in other cities. And so we were like, okay, we know, we, we were tasked with trying to figure out how we can be comparable to what other cities are doing. be comparable to what other cities are doing. And so then we drove to that.
Yep. But just to your point, this doesn't show spouses, but it does get slightly lower to the 25-year segment. But yeah, as you see in the current state, it's 1474 unless I've got 20-plus years and it's either 974 or 924.
If we take 10 years and only focus on 20 and 25, does that help at all in this or not?
It skews our numbers. It works. It makes it worse.
Go ahead, Gina. No, no, no.
I was just going to say that TMRs rules, you can retire in 10 years. So that's not up to us. It's not a benefit that we would change. That's just TMRs.
Got it.
So here, I'll keep walking through what's here and what a recommendation. We're leading to a recommendation of option four, but I'll kind of talk through it. So what I want to first focus on is the base rate. So up here, we have the base rate. Today, it's 1474. I showed you on the previous slide, if we just left, option one is just leaving the design the same, but just moving into that 16% jump. I know you see it switches plans, but that's, the point is that the lowest cost goes up 16% from 1474 to 1706. So if we don't change anything in our methodology of how we build rates, that's our starting point to our future analysis. So what we did in these couple of options, options two and three, is we said, you see, this is the same between options one, two, and three. But here, we say, let's modify our subsidies. So we're choosing to give a subsidy. And part of the model of actually addressing subsidy in earlier years, you see up here, we don't do anything under 20 years. Part of the idea is that we want, in the end, the retiree plan to have a mix of demographics, experience, et cetera, so you don't just only have a few sick people on the plan. And so some of this is making it a little bit more equitable, so we might have retirees with a few less years of experience on the plan. But as you see here, options two and three, keep the same fundamental rate, they just increase the direct subsidy. So then the net result here in this example is you get to nine, or 694, the market average for the 20-year. It's a little bit less for the 25-year, but you see it goes anywhere from 1294 based on years of experience down to 494. So that's all less than what you see today. In option four, it's getting at the same issue and yielding similar results as far as the impact to the retiree, but it's relooking fundamentally at how we build the rate. So we're fundamentally building the rate now with that mixed experience of that retiree, those retirees and those employees. And by doing that, it pushes this rate way down. And so therefore, we can, we can go a lot lighter on the subsidy or in this case, premium. We identified it builds this really low, a little bit too low for our early retirees. So we said, let's actually add back a premium to those folks with.
Surcharge.
Excuse me, a surcharge, thank you, for these folks. And we thought that that balanced out the design a little bit better. And so these both come to great results. What we as staff like about this option is it builds more of a sustainable model. If I go back to the prior slide, if I'm still building it off of retirees only, even if I add a couple of less sick retirees to the plan, it's still going to take five, 10 years, I don't know, for that to potentially stabilize or level out or be, it's always going to be volatile. We just hope it gets better. That option, by changing to the more hybrid approach, gets more at the fundamental issue. So then we get down to, that's all the retiree costs. Now we get to the city side. So the city side is, all these things cost money. As Dave described, we have to track the long-term liability, the current and future costs of everybody we anticipate to ever be on the plan. So our consultant builds all these tables, makes assumptions that we're going to increase our workforce by 2% a year and the cost will increase X and Y. And out of that, you get the long-term liability of all the current and future retirees and that's why the numbers end up being big. But currently, our numbers are small because we don't, theoretically, we don't really subsidize. So the number stays small. If you look at most of the other employers, employers, and if you may or may not recall from a past presentation, our current numbers are way below everybody else. To the question about ADC, we're paying it now. We're used to paying it. It's just a low number. In these other scenarios, that number increases, the ADC that Dave had emboldened on his prior, bold on his prior slide. So in all these scenarios, what we're talking about is adding in a one-time funding of 8 million, 8.8 million in all three of these scenarios, as was described on the prior slide, to help us get at some of that liability in the early years. And as Claire said, almost like buying points, it's decreasing how much you'll pay in the long term on everything. And so in these scenarios, you see that they're all more costly than our current plan. We understand that. The reason why this ends up being more costly in the long term is because there's also, there's an implicit subsidy here and it grows differently. So here, this 822, because it's built off the employees and the retirees, the difference between 1706 and 822, I think it's 870-something, that number is the implicit subsidy. That number grows at the rate in future years, think long-term, it grows at the rate of medical trend. So it might grow at a, it's modeled on about 6% a year. So that implicit subsidy is growing by 6% a year. We've actually built all of these blue, where currently we maxed their increase at a half of percent a year and we've actually modeled these at 3% a year. But point is, these, the things in the blue box grow at half the rate as this does. And so therefore, it does create greater long-term liability. But in our analysis, we identify that we think it gets at the fundamental issue that no other solution here does. And we feel like we can achieve by adding in some funding, 80% funded status this year. And then if we just continue to contribute the ADC in the future years, we'll be at 100% funded four years later. So four years later, we'll be back at a funded status of where we are today. It does, however, require some additional contributions year to year, which is where we're then pulling from our health plan and to other, to an extent, it will pull from other resources as well. But where we got to is we think that's a reasonable approach.
So I've been sitting here talking to Gina, trying to come up with a good analogy that will make this easier for you to understand.
Baseball?
No, it's not. But I'm afraid if I use this, I'm going to, I'm totally going to skewer this, but there wasn't a really good analogy, but we went through buying of homes, we went through filling up a jar of water, you know. So anyway, I'm trying to think of it like this, so bear with me. I start, I have my, I have a kid. I want to put my kid into college. I want to put them into college and I'm not really planning that well ahead, so I decide I'm going to put them in a college that is just down the street from my house. It costs X amount of dollars. We know it's going to grow over years. So I've worked out how much that's going to project and cost by the time the kid turns 18 years old, right? And I know that I have to put aside this amount of money and I have to fund it every year 100% to get to that by the end of 18 years. Now, but when I get kind of closer to 18 years, I'm like, no one's really going to this school. The school doesn't have a good reputation. Everyone's just dropping out of this school. So I really need to be saving for a better education. And so now we're shifting to a much higher cost. And now I'm putting, I know I'm going to have to put more aside, but now I'm not as far along in the savings to get to that 100% funding. So now I am trying to, I'm going to sink some savings I have into that to get me higher up to where I'm 80% funded. And then in the end, like he said, in four years, we'll get to 100%. Is that better to understand? Okay.
Yeah, you ask the in-laws for a loan.
I mean, we can ask Flower Mound if you want for a loan.
And just one addition on here, when we get down to, once we, once we get up to that point, then the ADC actually goes down. So we don't know exactly what it'll be, but it'll be more in the ballpark of 800K, but it decreases because now you're not paying that, basically the premium in the long term. The other thing that we've talked about some is all this is built off of our current experience. So what we would want to do is probably a couple of years from now is reanalyze the whole thing again and say, are the assumptions still accurate? Are the long-term liabilities like we thought they were or have they shifted? I think that's going to be a discipline we'll have to renew in the future years.
Let me ask this question. The, again, being in healthcare for a while, this is a numbers game, right? So the more people you have, the more you spread the risk out, the lower the rates go. I have a small company. We just joined a professional employer organization so I can pool my employees, my four with everybody else and I get a better, a better rate. Is that not possible for the city? We can't pool retirees with retirees at Flower Mound and Carrollton to?
Well, just going back to the fiscal framework Dave was talking about, our obligation is to report those liabilities wherever they are. That's how I conceptualize a response to that question. Would you add anything to it?
I think Ms. Albrighton can speak to that, but we're a single employer plan and if you wanted to kind of explain what that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it is, there, I don't know of any other places where you can, you know, cities can.
Pool together.
Their retiree experience.
I figured that was the answer. I was just curious.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
It's a good idea.
Yeah, TMRs, you know, has the retirees for the pension, but there's really not anything on the health side.
Yeah, I was thinking next business. Yeah, there we go.
But it's expensive.
Yeah.
But it's expensive to retain employees that really need to retire.
It is.
And if we really value our employees, we don't want them to literally work themselves to death before they retire. A lot of them are having to make a choice between having insurance and not having insurance because it's not affordable, it's not sustainable. And so what do you do? So I mean, we don't want to send them out, thank you for giving us your 20, 25 years' blood, sweat, and tears, and now you're going to have a new mortgage payment.
And I can give you, I'm not going to name names, but I can think of a couple of examples we have right now.
Yeah, I know.
I'm not going to name names, but the folks that probably should go and they're hanging on.
There's a certain cost savings to that that we can't even quantify in this.
Right. You know, one thing, I think you guys are probably one of the most fiscally responsible cities as far as your OPEB. You know, Dave was asking me how many fund their OPEB liability. I can count on two hands out of, or two fingers, you know, how many people have a trust? And, you know, as you put more money in there, it earns investment income at a higher rate. So if you didn't have the trust fund, we'd have to use a lower discount rate to calculate your liability, which might make it higher. So I think what these guys have come up with is really something that is sustainable, more sustainable and responsible.
I'm like coming fresh out of a tax class, like OPEB is like a living nightmare and it can go bad with the liabilities let go. But it sounds like in four years' time, we should be back.
At 100%.
At 100%. The only thing I would suggest, and I know you said two years, I'm like, that's something we need to watch each year to make sure that it's falling in the range of where we want it to be, to make sure that when we hit that four years, we're going to be back to 100% because who knows what will happen, bad year, whatever. But just to, just to be safe, just once a year, kind of say, here's what we think is tracking, we seem to be aligned with it, plus or minus or whatever. But that's something that needs to be watched because OPEB is a monster if it gets too far.
Yes, sir.
And what I'm reading here is that is for any retiree or their spouse that is still on the plan?
As far as who this would, who would be impacted by the change? It's the 20 retirees that are currently on the plan with their dependents and then any future retirees. Yes, ma'am?
But if they've left, they can't come back in now and say?
Yeah, it's a one-time decision point. So if you retired five years ago, you can't get back, choose to get back in later.
Okay. So I've got one question, a little unorthodox, but the people who will be affected by this are in the room with us right now. I'm just curious, is this important to you guys on a scale of like one to 10? How do you feel about this particular change?
Be honest. Don't be afraid.
If anybody paid attention, that thumbs up.
I'm sad Mark McMill left early. He was vociferous about this.
See, so Rick, like I said, I only worked here one year. So I'm looking at the top trend that he's, and I brought some Tad after the projected meeting. I'm still interested in the benefit that it would bring me even after I worked here for 10 years or however long it'll happen, right?
It's huge.
There is still a benefit there. So to me, there's a benefit and then Aaron or maybe it'll share it aside. There's some benefit to what he's going to say. I've been here a long, longer than.
Yeah.
Totally different perspective, but what we were talking about is there's got to be savings on the salary side because we've got employees who want to retire and can't afford it. They're at the top of the range.
Oh, that's a really good point.
And then we replace them. We're not going to replace them at the top.
That's a great point.
Right. And I mean, it will balance out, but the one thing that we can do as a council is to completely value the service that our employees have given us and show them, we're not going to bankrupt you when you retire.
Stacy, you're oddly quiet. You usually have an opinion of your thoughts.
I think it would be a bit, here's the thing, it's not going to work for everybody. We need to have as much in our tool chest as possible. This is how we can, this is how we can work with you to help you get to your life goal. Because yeah, you're right. The day we walk out of here and probably before, we are lining up to fill our positions. Like we have to hand off that if it's on and this might help that transition go a little bit smoother and help me to back out there.
And then one last question, I'll be quiet, I promise, because I know it's getting late. The, so the big question I've got is when we come back in, in the October timeframe and we're talking about taxes and rates and things like that and all the stuff we have to pay for, it's impossible to project, I know, but your thoughts, are we going to be hit and say, okay, well, remember that thing we did back in, back in the beginning of the year? Now we've got to bump taxes up by three cents or something like that?
Clarify that. Dave started talking about that earlier and he was 100% correct that this is adding a million dollars in ongoing every year dollars. So when you look at where that's going to come from, the bulk of that will be from the general fund because that's where the bulk of the employees are. And so we're going to have to increase our contribution to that. And so you'll see that in your budget this upcoming year and increase primarily in the general and the utility fund related to this because that million has to come from somewhere. So as we're making budget decisions next year and putting together your base budget, this will already be in that base budget because you're making that decision now and we've got to make that change for 2025 because we've just held those rates steady right now. So we need to make that change. So you'll see it in your base budget and you'll have probably less ability to fund something else because what we would have funded maybe in the base in place of that will probably be on the unfunded list and you'll have to make a decision there.
Or to Aaron's point, we might get some of the higher salary people retire.
Right. We certainly could. And we have time right now. If we put this in place in March and then you have six months of the year left that you could maybe see.
Let me ask you this. We have specifically budgeted and taken, let's say, 5-point-whatever-million off of our sales tax in anticipation that our wonderful tax assessor, not tax assessor, our state comptroller was wanting to try to do. So we already have that in there.
Well, we quit doing that this budget year.
Okay.
Because we did it for four years and we finally said, we kept reducing it every year because we were like, it doesn't seem likely that this is going to come to fruition. And so this year's budget, this is the first year, we don't have that in there.
I think that the benefit balances out. If not, I mean, it does. You're in the business, you know, once we get them out the door, we get the new ones in. The cost, there's a lot of cost savings on this and it will balance out and we can find that somewhere.
So I would say one thing, just to make sure we're going in eyes wide open on the risk. Just to make sure we're going in eyes wide open on, on the risk. The risk is that those costs could probably go up maybe, but I think, we're talking about three-quarters of a fire truck, a million dollars a year. I think the, the upside is, is we get a, a small pool into a larger pool, which actually has cost savings. It also helps our retirees. But, you know, that, that, that million dollars, I hope it's a million dollars. That's why I'm kind of focusing in on. We have to watch that to make sure that that number doesn't, doesn't really jump on us. But all in all, considering that, just, just understanding, we don't, we don't want to increase, increase that OPEB liability. We want to make sure we're at 100%, because that, that kills cities. But having said that, I do believe that million dollars is something that we can afford. It is just something that we won't be able to buy. We just need to understand that. And moving forward, we just need to watch it, and we help our retirees, we put, we help our people who are working here as well, to get a, hopefully, a better deal. But I, my accountant and me just can't ignore the numbers such as-
Sure. So just, just to tie up, I know it's, I know we're closing out. Just two things, and I'll get into the recommendation here. See if this slide, this works again. I think this is operator error, but that's okay. Oh, here we go. Turned it off somehow. I don't know. Yeah, Chris, can you hit one more? Just two things I was going to mention. One is that in the assumptions, I didn't mention this, because it's really nerdy, but in all those assumptions, it's considering what, what looks good to the retiree, we assume participation levels. So all that is tied in. So to, to your point of, if it's particularly desirable, I think we've got some very solid assumptions built into the model we have here. The other thing is, I just happened to get a call like, or an email ended day yesterday from a peer at City of Allen, who, who said they were having discussions with their benefits consultant about this exact issue. And they conveyed that they're, they're somewhat similar to us. They're more on our approach, closer to our approach right now, and they're trying to figure out a way to do things differently. So we're not the only ones considering something like this. So getting to our recommendation, it is to change to retiree health strategy, option four, which was one furthest on the right in the prior screen. Why? We believe it values our retirees by lowering premium costs to market competitive rates. We believe it decreases the likelihood of large rate increases in the future by the use of a blended active retiree rate. It modifies the direct subsidy to a subsidy surcharge system that models our values for long-term employees, and it will be funded in a fiscally responsible manner. So that is our recommendation. What next steps would look like is staff would then bring the following actions to council. We'd work to move the 8.8 million to the three funds as described by Dave earlier. We'd make an, an update to the HR policy around medical plan, where it only allows that premium to increase by a half a percent per year, and we change it to 3% to match what was modeled in the prior slide. And then our plan would be to then actually deliver the relief to the retirees on a May timeline, if y'all are comfortable with that approach. So that concludes, I know it was a lot. Thank you for sitting with us. I'm happy to answer any questions, or listen to any feedback y'all have.
Just one more point of clarity, just for anybody who might be listening. What we've seen here, this isn't some sort of catalog premium insurance. This gets us about where the rest of our comparison.
Yes, sir.
We always compare against a dozen or so other cities. This puts us right in the sweet spot on that bell curve. Is that right?
Yes, sir. That's absolutely right.
Thank you.
I think it's a good thing. I mean, if you look at, you know, 947, I mean, that's, and you retire, that's a lot. I mean, the six, obviously, the 694 is a whole lot more palatable, if somebody is retired. I mean, yeah, 947, that's a mortgage payment, so.
I mean, you're getting at 19, 2,000 for a couple. Sorry. You're looking at like 1,900 to 2,000 this year for a husband and wife. Next year, it could go up 10, 16%. It's just-
I think you've got consensus.
Yes, sir. Thank you all very much.
All right. Thank you, sir.